We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting work session for the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Kevin Cook, serving as the Chair. Joining me today is Commissioner Aaron Mays and Commissioner Bill Rippon. This morning for our work session, we're going to be delving into information technology, what they do and what tasks they're working on right now. And so I'm going to turn it over to our director, Mark Price.
Morning Commissioners, Mark Price, Information Technology. Just, hopefully I'll keep this interesting and not the boring IT that most people get. Just want to go over kind of what IT is, what we've been doing, what we're seeing in the world and kind of where we're going. First off, for those who don't know, IT has twenty-four employees. We take care of twenty-five office departments. And of those twenty-five office departments, that actually is over forty county facilities. We actually have networking and equipment in. There's some facilities we don't have equipment in, but that is actual, pretty close count. I sat down between Parks and Rec, Public Works, Sheriff's Office, you know, it's a lot of places throughout the county we're going. We're going everywhere from Rossville, down to Auburn, up north to North Topeka, Semin area. Keeps us nice and busy. Of that, it includes over eleven hundred computers and eleven hundred network users. And kind of the three in there too, the hundred and eighty network switches, that's what connects everything, computers, printers, cameras, basically keeps the county running, keeps the departments working. And that's all stuff we have to support, maintain, replace, and keep running for everyone in the county to provide their services. That's the kind of the big part I look at and my department looks at is, we're here to allow departments provide services to the citizens. And we're trying to make sure that when the citizens come in to do something that requires IT, it happens as seamlessly and painlessly as possible. A big part of that is our asset management. It's how do we handle our computers? We currently are running on about a six-year tech refresh schedule. That means we're trying to replace that eleven hundred computers, put a new one out every six years. In two thousand and twenty-three, we got a little behind. We only did about hundred and twenty computers. For twenty-four, we're looking at hitting over two hundred and forty computers. And that will actually try to hit about the same number in twenty-five. Right now, the big push we have is Windows ten is hitting the end of life coming up in two thousand and twenty-five. So we need to make sure all the computers we have are ready for Windows eleven. And along with getting computers replaced, start getting Windows eleven out to all of our users. We've got to make sure all the software that we are required to use, whether it be the mover system for motor vehicle, the Elvis system for elections, works on Windows eleven and those are out and in place and not causing problems for when the day comes when those are no longer supported. Then another big thing we're dealing with, and I think everyone's dealing with, is cybersecurity. You know, it really has hit the news with what happened in the state of Kansas. That was a real tough time. I remember the, that's when I remember the exact place and day I was at, where I was at, when that happened. It did affect us indirectly. And, you know, we've done everything we can, working with the state and with the courts, to make sure they're back up and going with how it affected us. And we supported the, what support we could give to the courts when they're going through it to get back up. We actually have a final integration, I think, that we're planning on turning back up today. We looked at what happened with the state and we've evaluated our systems. And, you know, I think we're in a good place. It did kind of make us, you know, recalculate what we're doing, make sure we are happy with where we are and what we're doing. Another big part of it is email compromises. That's probably the thing that we're hitting day to day that, you know, is what I feel is one of the most likely things to affect the county. Last year, we, our systems blocked over twenty-six thousand messages. Most of those are pretty, they're pretty bad, but they're also pretty easy to detect. The ones that really kind of come in and that get scary is ones that are from known partner agencies. We've seen a few over the last year. And it is a known person, someone an office deals with all the time. Say it's Commissioner Cook is emailing the DA's office, dealing with a client. Commissioner Cook, when he's at his office, does something he shouldn't. And now the bad actors have access to his email. They'll sit there for a week or two where no one realizes it's going on. He doesn't realize they have access to his system. And they've got a day, they start sending out emails as Kevin Cook, attorney, to the DA with case numbers, looking very legitimate with a link in it to try to create an email compromise. We've seen stuff like that happen. It was not Commissioner Cook. We did not have that, but that is a very similar example to what we've seen, which makes it very hard because you have an attorney in the DA's office say, I've got this email from someone I know pertaining to a case. I need to have it through because we've got something going on. We don't want to miss what's going on with the case. And we start looking through and we find out it really, like, is coming from this person's actual email address, if not actually from the person. And if you actually respond to those emails, the bad actors are saying they're watching what's going on and responding to those emails. It's really hard to detect. It's really hard to prevent. What we really ask is, we have cybersecurity training. I know it gets boring and, you know, isn't always the most interesting, but, you know, the things they're teaching in there are important. They do matter. Pay attention to them. And if you, you know, when you're getting emails, if even if it's from someone you know, if it seems out of the ordinary, kind of have a zero trust policy. Don't be afraid to reach out and ask IT. Don't be afraid to reach out via phone and ask the partner company. I hope this doesn't get them mad. Bettis Asphalt, we've had a request, I think every, about two years, we get a request to change their ACH. And it will come from something that looks like Bettis Asphalt. It is not Bettis Asphalt. Our clerk's office has done a very good job. They'll reach out to someone at Bettis directly, not through the email that it came from. And every time it's verified, no, that is not us. We're not trying to change our ACH for them. We just ignore them and move on. But the hackers, the bad actors, wherever they are, are getting very sophisticated. It's not the, you know, Nigerian print scheme anymore. It's very highly formulated, very technical attacks that are very hard to identify. So just, we ask our users, oh, Rich?
This is a true story. About six, seven, eight months ago, Bettis got an email from Shawnee County telling us that they were changing their ACH. And we called and you did not. But we got that email from a county address. Spoofed.
Yes. Yeah. Like I said, we've gotten them from Bettis Asphalt. It's one that's up top of my mind just because it's a big company we deal with. And I, from a class I went through a few years ago in North Carolina, there was, I think it was like Tarheel paving. Well, heel there is H-E-L. Someone had created a Tarheel, H-E-A-L, email address, contacted a county, requested to get their ACH changed. They changed their ACH. And I believe the number was close to a million dollars in payments that were made to the wrong company. So the, being detailed oriented, questioning it, like I say, reach out to IT if you ever have a question. Reach out to whoever sent it. I know I beat it up a lot when I'm up here, but that's, those are the things we're really seeing that does concern me and does stand to, you know, whether it's hurt constituents because, you know, someone from Shawnee County, it's the phone calls of, you've got a warrant. It's the phone calls that, you know, you need to pay your taxes or we're going to come and arrest you. You know, they say they don't ever call. They don't ever call. They're going to have a guy knocking on your door, not a phone call. So whether, you know, whether it's poor people within the county or our constituents, our customers, you know, just be wary, be cognizant of what's going on and do that to protect yourself. And it's not stuff I ask everyone in the county to try to do to protect them. Another kind of big push we have right now is our web modernization. We're going from some old websites, trying to get things updated. Part of it comes down to security. Part of it comes down to old systems we need to replace. Part of it, we're, with the courthouse renovation, we're moving our data center. And there's some stuff I just don't want to move. And so we're trying to get it moved into the cloud, which adds some more protection, some more resiliency. If something happens, we don't have a centralized place that we're relying on to provide the web services to our constituents. So that's something we're going through right now. Right now, we're in the middle, it might actually be launched already, actually it has launched. This is internal only to Shawnee County and for Shawnee County users, the S-N-Interweb.us. So you're used to going to S-N-Interweb. We have a lot of HR forums. Different departments have forums out there. It's now Interweb.us. If you go to the old site, there's a link at the top to it. Or you can just type in Interweb.us to your web browser and it'll take you to it. You have to be within the county. That is not accessible outside the county. And again, that's only for county users. We're also right now updating all of our web applications. Those were before Cinco.us. We're moving that to our CincoApps.us. It gives us a centralized place to have all of our apps, rather than we had some on Cinco.us, some on CincoApps. We've also got our AwesomeQ.us. So we're trying to get everything consolidated, make it more consistent, just kind of have the one-stop shopping. This is a list of applications where we'll be moving it. We'll be affecting users. You'll need to keep an eye out. If you're one of our solid waste, if you're applying for the county human resources, redemption, redention, redentions online, which is an appraisers for, I really, I think that's where you do personal property. Should know. And then our inmate booking, which just has a list of people who were booked in that day and has a small historical list for current bookings. Those will be moving in the near future to CincoApps.us. And then kind of the really big one, which I don't, we'll start rolling it out this year, but it's probably going to be a two-year process before we're all done, just because of the mountains going to impact, is we're going to be rolling our Cinco.us to Cinco.gov. Cinco.gov is really pushed out as a highly secure governmental website domain. The only way you can get it is by actually applying to the US government, the federal government, and they release those addresses. When you get to the US's, when you get to the other ones, anyone and their brother can get one if they ask. This one is, the .gov is very restrictive. We actually had to go through a process to get SNCO and not just Shawnee. I think it would have been Shawnee County, Kansas. I wanted to try to keep it consistent and something easier to type in. And that, like I said, that will be rolling out over the next year. And I don't foresee the Cinco.us going away for probably a couple of years because all of our tax forms, you know, we have to work with all of our departments on, everything from letterhead, business cards, you know, the forms we're sending out to, for tax forms, auto renewals, we'll have to get all that updated and distributed. So that's a big one to look for. It's also kind of just a thing to note, if UC a .gov domain name, that is very much seen as a secure website. And if you go to a .gov, you are dealing with the government. You're not dealing, there's not a question of who you would be dealing with and working with there. And then kind of the final, and I guess I'm talking quick, so maybe it's good, is AI. I just kind of want to hit on this because it's really big in the news. Seems like you can't go a day or two without hearing an AI story. Right now in Shawnee County, we're working on developing a policy for AI. It's not so much a, don't use AI. It's kind of be aware and think about it before you use AI. The big kind of concern is, I don't think some people realize that if whatever you put into AI, unless you have your own AI system, if you're going with the Bard's or GPT chat, you're training it as you use it. So as you put information in, it's remembering that information and learning. So the big thing there is be aware of restricted use information. And when I say restricted use information, I'm talking about PHI, personally identifiable information, health information, sensitive information, because if you put in there something sensitive, it will learn it. And then it will, if they ask the right question, it will regurgitate that information and put it as an output. There has been situations where people have inadvertently, without thinking about it, putting in health information. And then the AI system knows that someone has a disease or a medical issue, and it will send that out and not keep it private. You know, I think the other things to kind of look at and be aware of is any response from AI, you just need to validate and verify. I will say, from six months ago, this has gotten a whole lot better than where it was. If you asked, if you asked about building a fence in Shawnee County, the information you got six months ago was actually the city of Topeka's requirements for a fence from their planning department. Now, if you ask that same question, it actually, it says it doesn't know to check with the county website. So that is a big improvement. Before, it would, and I think it still can give information that is accurate, but maybe not pertinent to, you know, whether it be a jurisdiction or an exact thing when you're talking government. Another important thing to realize is AI has made stuff up. Again, I think it's getting better as it's learning. You know, if you, there's reports or stories I've seen where people asked it to do a report of, on something, the actual references it used were imaginary. It referenced books that did not exist. So as you're using AI, just always validate the information. You know, don't use verbatim. You know, don't assume it to be truthful and credible. You know, take the time, read it over. If it's referencing specific cases or references, validate those references. So we're, if you're a county employee, you're not putting out any of your information and being mislead. But we should have a, I would hope here in the next month or so, we should have a policy in front of the Commissioners to kind of say how county employees will use it and things that county employees need to look out for. In a quick way, that's kind of what I have. That's kind of where IT is. That's what IT is doing. Those are the things we're dealing with, looking at, and preparing for.
So Awesome Q, when it came out, it alleviated a lot of the lines that we had at the Treasurer's Office, streamlined the process for the Treasurer's Office. Do you see your department doing or having the ability to do more of those types of things with other departments? Or is it that your office is really pretty full with projects that you have just keeping the day-to-day operations of the county going?
I think we're always open to those projects. But we are, you know, right now, we're very full, trying to keep going, what we have going. Awesome Q, you know, it's been out for, I almost think twelve years or something. I honestly don't know the, how long. And we've had one or two revisions. When COVID came out, we added a scheduling piece to it. You know, we've rolled out the HR system. We've got our solid waste billing system that we're out supporting. We always want to be there for our departments. And where it makes sense, if there is a, you know, application or some sort of process that they need improvement on, if it's something that we can help develop and move forward with, I think it's something we need to be there for. But we also have to kind of balance out of supporting what we have out there and not giving, you know, so many applications where we have people waiting months, if not years, to get a small change to their system. It's something we're working through, trying to figure out what that balance is of bringing on new projects, supporting the old projects, and then sometimes, you know, looking at, okay, let's bring in a system like the planning system. That was, that was something I know my people were very capable of writing and making. But it made sense because of the timelines when, you know, we'd have time to work on it. It made sense to go and buy an off-the-shelf system because it was something will help Joanie and the planning department greatly and streamline the process for wanting to get a building permit in Shawnee County.
So a project like, if Parks and Rec wanted to have a QR code throughout Ward Mead, where it identified every plant that was in Ward Mead, every building and a history and a description, that might be a project outside of your department. And there might be reasons why we would hire outside vendors to do some web design or application design.
Actually, something like, and I know there's a lot of companies out there that actually do what you're talking about. And one thing you're looking at there is you're talking something people are going to be able to download to a phone. Well, now you start talking, when you're developing for a mobile device or a phone, you've got Androids, you've got iPhones, you've got different versions of iPhones. And to have the expertise to actually just write an iPhone-supported device or supported app, it's probably a team of five or ten people just on their own, just for Apple knowledge. And those are things that just, it doesn't make financial sense for the county to try to bring in-house. A lot of times when we've looked at what the costs are to purchase and buying off-the-shelf system like that, it would, it would take us years to ever get the payback. When we did the initial development, you're talking, you know, and these aren't real numbers, but you're talking a hundred thousand dollars worth of development time, where you can spend ten thousand dollars a year to buy a system. That ten thousand, a hundred thousand dollar developments, the one time, doesn't include the support. Where when you pay ten thousand dollars a year, you're now getting the support, constant upgrades. And them handling all the changes and updates, revisions to the system that, you know, we would then have to figure out later in time of, okay, now we're going to have a twenty thousand dollars of county employee time to add these features. So those are the, those are kind of the reasons we look at it. And we did develop one iPhone app, or it was an Apple iPod app. And that was a big learning experience because just getting into the Apple world takes a whole lot. And then they do an upgrade. And now you're changing that, you're updating that application, meeting their new standards. And we have no control, no knowledge of when they're coming out with new versions or when they're fixing their bugs that then kick off a, we've got to do an update to make the application work.
We have an example of that with Ward Mead. You were mentioning if we had a system by which people could get on their phone with an app and hear about the different buildings. We have one called OtoCast, O-T-O Cast. And people can go to a building and they could click on that. And all of a sudden, somebody's narrating a little bit of the story about that building and whatnot. And you're right, it's good that they do the upgrades and whatnot. But, and yet we can still make our changes to it as time goes on.
And I think places where IT fits into a project like that is, you know, Ward Mead might not be one of the issues, but, you know, if you're trying to roll something like that out where you need connectivity, is there a connectivity issue? Do we need to look at doing public Wi-Fi in those areas so as the citizens go around, they have the connectivity so that that other system works? That would be where IT could get involved and help out. And I think that's where it makes sense to have us help out with a CIST project, but then you're buying that. Because there, you know, Gage Park, haven't hung out there as much as I used to when my kid was swimming, but Gage Park always is a weird place that doesn't have great cell signal. I don't know if it's still, still true, but, you know, and I know that's something we've talked with Parks and Rec about and looked at, of how do you improve in the parks, Wi-Fi connectivity so as people are there. And that's, you know, those are big projects that, one day, I think, I don't want to speak for him since he's not here, but I think that's something I know he would like to do. It's a funding issue. But that's where IT fits in of how do we plan and roll that piece out that would help support another app.
Prior to smartphones really being very prevalent, our social media policy that we had as part of our county code for employees had a lot of enforcement. Do we see that as really being a big issue anymore, or has that kind of gone by the wayside?
We do have a current social media policy that Amanda has put out there. I think it's something we'd like departments to review. One thing we're really trying to do with that is to be consistent across Shawnee County and make sure as accounts get created, that we still can have access to them. If someone creates one tied to their personal account and were to pass away, that becomes very hard to get back. What we try to put out in policy is to where there's multiple admins, it's not tied to a personal account. There's also some privacy issues as government. By tying it to your personal account, you actually could open up your personal account to open records. You really want to have that separation between Mark Price as the individual and Mark Price as the IT director. It can be a very blurred line. And if, just by the pure fact of me as a person, as Mark Price, sharing county policies, it would, could imply that that is my government account and open it up to open records. So the current social media policy we have addresses a lot of that, addresses how to handle your social media, what you should and shouldn't do if you're allowing comments. You should not delete a comment, no matter how crude or inappropriate it might be, without talking to Rich, because there's a First Amendment right. And we've got to be very aware of what we're deleting and what we're removing. So we do have a policy already in place. I highly recommend people go talk, look at it. And if there's questions, come to me or to Amanda, and we can help interpret it. And there's a whole lot of stuff with social media that gets really, really tricky.
Commissioner Mays, questions?
Yeah. On the .gov websites, I mean, I know it's been quite a process to get that affirmed, I think by the federal government that has to issue that to us. Is that going to cover all of our websites or just SNCO?
So the initial rollout is going to be just our SNCO.gov. I would like to pull everything at some point under that. I mean, I realize as I'm writing this up of I'm contradicting myself in some ways because I'm saying .gov makes it more secure. But right before that, I'm talking about how we're rolling everything to .us. One of the restrictions with the .gov is you're really supposed to only have your county, state, your entity name identified by state. The only way we were able to get Cinco.us is there is no other Shawnee County in the United States. And I did not know that. I know there's Shawnee cities, but we are the only county named Shawnee. If it wasn't for that, we would not have been able to get Cinco. We would have had, I think it would have been like Shawnee, Kansas. Either it had been like Shawnee, Kansas, or Shawnee County, Kansas, which just isn't easy to type in. So I want to keep it simple. So that's where it kind of gets into the hard part of answering, getting back to answering your question of the .us, not .us. To get like a Cinco Apps, which is an advocate, you know, denotes to us and to users that this is an application for Shawnee County, I don't think we'd be able to get that. What we probably have to do is create a subdomain under Cinco.gov, like Apps.Cinco.gov, and then put all of our apps there. Because of where we're, how we're hosting that, we would have to look into what that means for, we've been moving to a cloud-based infrastructure for hosting our apps. That way, we're not like, say, it gets us out of being tied to a single location because you've got, you know, anyone from Shawnee County. I realize there could be people, developers, people from outside of Shawnee County coming in. And we want to get that out of where it was coming to a server within our courthouse or wherever our data center was. I want to kind of remove it from there. So we didn't have as much outside traffic having to come into our network. And then it also gives redundancies. So we're not relying on one server goes down, now we're trying to get that server back up. This is in the cloud. They're replicating between locations. A tornado in Topeka isn't going to be affected when you're talking about a Microsoft data center in, I think, Chicago and one in Phoenix. You know, something affecting Chicago is not going to affect Phoenix. And so the hope is we never see an outage and keep things going.
I guess my, to be more specific, you know, Sheriff, we've had issues with their security certificate that it won't open on some computers. And so, I mean, is there a possibility of migrating them over to the .gov? I mean, I know you said it's not more secure, but, I mean, it shows people that it's a legit website and that it, I mean, it should be secure.
Well, and particularly to the Shawnee Sheriff, I think actually last week, we actually got that issue resolved. That, don't want to get in specifics, but we're actually rolling out a new front end for how our web traffic's handled to add some security. And through that, we were able to resolve the security certificate issue with the Cinco.Sheriff, Cinco.us. So now when you go to Sheriff, Shawnee Sheriff, ShawneeSheriff.org, it is, the certificate's appropriate and secure now.
Okay. Okay.
Mark, over at the Stormont Vale Events Center, when we were renovating it, we upgraded the ability for people to get on the web there. Is that, is that system Shawnee County, or is that a separate?
That is managed by the
OBG.
OBG.
OBG, so that's
We, at, at Stormont Vale Events Center, we provide telephone service to them, but no, no other IT services over there.
Mark, talk a little bit about fiber optic and, you know, do we have any kind of initiatives going on around the county of trying to expand our fiber optic network?
Um, actually, yeah, we do have a few projects going on. We, we have one, we're getting ready to probably be an RFP to extend the fiber to the JP Lewis Health Department. We've always worked in cooperation with the city of Topeka. We do not have a whole lot of dark fiber of our own. We've piggybacked on to fiber they put in 20-plus years ago. I know they're, from talking with their director, that, that their fiber infrastructure is aging and they're, you know, we're working together to look at what that means and what we have to do to expand it. But, you know, we, we do have that project. I'm also in talks with Kurt whenever it makes sense if he's doing a road project of trying to get at least conduit put in the ground so for future expansion. One, one I'm looking at that I've talked with him that's a couple of years out is the Rochester Road Project. Up at 46th Street, we've got a whole lot of facilities. We've got the North Community Center. Public Works has a road and bridge shop, sign shop. We have our household hazardous waste. Parks and Rec, then also on the, there's two sides of 46th Street. There's the community center side, then there's the, what I call the shop side on 46th Street. There's also a Parks and Rec maintenance facility there. Now, we've got North Aquatic Center. We, we have fiber through that, that whole area, but we're not on a real high-speed connection back to the courthouse, which limits us. So, you know, the, the goal would be to get Kurt to put a conduit in the ground and we would get fiber up there. That would just really expand what our services we can provide. Where, right now, we're kind of on a limited connection. By, by pulling them onto dark fiber, it kind of gives you visibility like you're sitting in the same building. You know, I, with the Harley Shop, the Sheriff's Office was looking at adding some fiber over there, and if we leased that line, I think it was a, like a $5,000 a month service. So, you know, fiber build-out is not cheap, but you're, you're at those points looking at multiple years and you can then also separate out traffic for security reasons. You don't always want all the same fiber, traffic going over one fiber. So like I say, up on the 46th Street, it would allow us that, to increase services of, you know, with the computer lab up there is, I'd have, have a dream one day, don't know that will ever happen, of we, we've got all the labs, library labs in the community centers. Right now, those are each on their own Cox connection. My, my dream would be one day if we get our own fiber to all those locations, get connected to the library and now actually just make those extensions of the library for the labs. That way they're not going through another connection, kind of limited connection. It would give the library a whole lot more vision into what's going on up there and even be able to increase their services with a, a lot less involvement from my staff so they're not restricted and kind of limited by what the county's giving them just because of the nature of it's a Cox connection that you have to go out and look at and make changes to allow them to control everything from, from the library. That's a kind of down-the-road thing of if we can ever get all the fiber we need and the fiber put in place, that would be something that we could do.
So how much of the fiber can we do ourselves? Like, I know your staff isn't huge. Public Works staff probably isn't, you know, trained to do fiber optic cables. I mean, is this something that we have to contract out every time, or are we able to handle, like if we decided to do it at the, the, the new building at 21st and Topeka?
So that building, we, we'd have to contract it out. There, we just don't have the, number one, the licensing and insuring to be able to pull it. It's something I don't think Kurt's staff would want to get involved with. And we just, my staff has the skills to do like once it gets into the building, but not the actual in the ground.
With that project, we may need to get with the city of Topeka because I believe they are repaving Topeka Boulevard this summer. It might be a good time to work on some of that stuff.
Yeah, there, actually, there's another option there that I think is a better option. I could, I'd be happy to share offline that there's, there's other, some other facilities, in-ground facilities for fiber that are already in that area and we're, the, I guess, the state, state has put fiber down Topeka Boulevard to the Driver's License Bureau from downtown. We're, we're in contact with them and trying to work out what we can do to utilize that and not have to put our own fiber in.
Okay, good deal.
There'll, there'll still be some, you know, that last mile build-out because I think the closest it gets to the courthouse is over by the Capitol. So we'll have to get from the Capitol, you know, to the courthouse and we'll have to find the secondary path because of it being the Sheriff's Office that will probably go down Monroe to get to
So you're already working on it?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and we're, and I, you know, City of Topeka's always talking to us. We're talking to City of Topeka. We're even talking with some anchor institutions as things come up of, you know, as, as we're looking at putting fiber in the ground, you know, when you're, you're going to different areas, we're going by 501 like locations all the time. You know, we're talking with 501 of where can we work together? Currently, I mean, obviously JP Lewis is the one I brought up. JP Lewis is functioning well. The way they're functioning is we are connected to a 501 fiber that takes us over to Robinson and from, well, community, uh, to Central Park. And from Central Park, we get on a city fiber that takes us through a city network to here. So we're not on a complete dark fiber. We're, we're shared with a lot of other things. And so, you know, it works, it functions, but we're, we're limited on the public Wi-Fi they have there. We have to have a different service for security reasons that we're paying a monthly charge for. If I can get dark fiber all the way there, I can bring them into our public Wi-Fi we have through another connection that I'm not paying a monthly service for. It's just part of our regular internet. So that's where it becomes advantageous is we've got some little things set up to provide services and like that JP Lewis building for public Wi-Fi that if we get dark fiber, we'll, we'll be able to just be consistent whether it's at the courthouse or JP Lewis, the public Wi-Fi for our management purposes is the same.
Mark, Gage Park's starting its master plan, or do you have, have they approached you about getting your input into that project and?
We, we have talked a kind of on the side here or there. We've not actually sat down and done a, a full, full discussion on it.
Yeah, I think you guys ought to have a seat at that table.
Yeah, and I know, I know between Friends of the Zoo and the city and Shawnee County, there's an, especially, there's going to be a, a big discussion on services in the ground because there's, look, we, we want to try to really improve on what we have there. And that's a, an area, there's been some discussion, but not, not directly related to the master plan.
The, the other project that's on the horizon is the Oakland Pool. We'll make sure we get a line over there.
No, and we, we, I've talked with Tim on there of also making sure there's leased facilities ready for, you know, things like security cameras. That's something that gets missed a lot.
Yeah.
You know, get on some light poles, make sure we can, down the road, get security cameras put on there. And that is, it's more than just having a cable because you have to have power. Most, I never knew this, most light poles have a centralized on-off switch, so they don't have constant power. So you really have to run then a secondary power to a light pole so you can control its power different than the actual light power. Most, like I say, I did not realize most light poles don't have their own on-off switch. And so because it's a centralized timer or daylight sensor, you have to then change the way power to the pole works because you have to have the light power, then you have to have power for a camera.
Any questions? Any closing, any closing thoughts, Mark?
I just really want to thank you guys. You guys have been really supportive of IT. And I probably don't get down here and thank you enough, but you, you guys have, with the support you've given, has really made our life a lot easier. I'm almost able to sleep through the night, but it's, it's a, it's a scary world in IT and, you know, with your guys' support, we've been able to do a lot to put the county in a lot better situation. I'm not saying we're in a good situation. I don't know that I would ever say we're in a good situation, but we're in a whole lot better situation than we've been in years past and, than I think some of our sister organizations. So I do thank you guys for that.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. All right. Our next item is public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment?
Henry McClure. We have a JETO meeting coming up. The last JETO meeting, actually the, the only JETO meeting that I think a citizen was allowed to talk to, present. We brought forward the Travelers Deal. And I was real appreciative, you know, to be able to get the opportunity to talk and present. Because that's the foundation of where, what we really need to do is we really need to get more public involvement with where these JETO funds are going. The, one of the JETO members, Neil Dobler, brought forward some people and said, no, we don't have any money to do that. So at the very next meeting, there was a carry forward of $5 million. So apparently if you had $5 million carryover, you had $5 million in the bank. So I think the JETO funds are very legitimate to tear down the Travelers to create a shovel-ready because it goes back to the very foundation of why we approved the quarter cent sales tax for economic development in the beginning. It was to create shovel-ready land. And there, you know, some, sometimes in this town you hear, well, if I do it for you, I got to do it for everybody. Well, okay, fair. You're, you're just trying to pick the winners. You're only doing it for your own projects. The, the, let's go back to the overhead of $1.9 million in overhead from your contractor. 39% of the funds being used for overhead. So I'm asking for a couple hundred thousand dollars to tear down a problematic property. And I, I don't thi, I think it fits within the inter-local agreement that says economic development, quality of life, and infrastructure. So I think that fits on all three parts. Oh, it doesn't create jobs. Well, the people that tear down the hotel, that, those are jobs. And making shovel-ready land and having shovel-ready land is, I think it was the foundation of why we as citizens went out and voted for the quarter cent sales tax. See, we got to have long memories. My mentor in the real estate business said, you have to have a long memory. Well, I've been, I'm, since I went out and lobbied to get the money and I see today the money isn't going the right way, well, maybe I'll have to lobby to take away the money. We got to figure out how to do it differently. Man, what would really be cool is if we had a work session like this at JETO. But we've got to start bringing forward new ideas and different ideas. You're better off doing 100 small deals with little, why don't we start taking care of Shawnee County first? Why are we trying to attract these huge companies to Topeka that didn't increase the tax base and it didn't increase the volume of, of property tax? And it didn't increase the volume of people. It didn't grow the population. And that, that was kind of the idea of why we needed to have economic development. We want to grow our tax base and we want to make it nice to where people here. So let's, want to move here. So let's make it Shawnee County first. Why don't we, why don't we say, look, we're just going to worry about Shawnee County today and create jobs? Well, yeah, it will create, if you did 100 small jobs, it's helping grow our existing businesses. But we don't have any business, any, you know, giving corporate welfare to the Mars family. It, it's not working. So are those deals actually the deals that are creating the job problem? So, you know, we didn't grow our population. There seems to be, I hear from so many people, they can't get people to work for them. So is that creating the job problem? So the other day I was looking at the 501-3C of, of Go Topeka, and right on it, there's a grant for the WCA. Excuse me. What, what are they in the grant business for? What, why is Go Topeka giving grants to anybody? I didn't hire, you didn't hire them to be a grant giver. The, she was all proud at the last meeting about giving a grant to the guy that put up some Christmas tree lights. I mean, let's get real. You know, I asked for $8,000 for a sewer line for a Pizza Hut deal. No, that doesn't create jobs. Well, what did the WCA money go to? You can, so there's not, there's, there's not any oversight going on here. And, you know, a good friend of mine said the other day that really Matt and Molly were more politicians. Well, you need to have dealmakers coming forward and bringing deals. We're, hey, trust me, I know the process because I got to go through the process to get paid. We only get paid in our world based on successful deals closing. I know who to talk to. I'm trying to talk to a higher level. Your JETO, we're, your, your JETO votes. But you're, you can't send me away and say, hey, go talk to the city of Topeka. I need you guys to lobby the city of Topeka. You know, we're all county residents, so this guy's got, he might have a good idea every once in a while. Maybe your guys, you guys could influence some of the decision-making process that doesn't take place over there. So we got chance, we got a chance to do the Travelers coming up at the next JETO meeting. Also too, when you make a, a request to have public comment at the city, they, they send you back an email. And I made a request to have public comment at JETO, and I never heard from anything. So I just, I did send an email out, so this could be a matter of record that I'd like the opportunity to at least speak at the JETO meeting because I know you take comment at the end of it. But we, we really have to, you got to take a look at your contractor because they're fleecing our town and it's wrong. Is there any ever back and forth here? Is this just one way? You guys?
It's public comment, not public discussion.
All right, Tim, four.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Any administrative communication?
Good morning, Commissioners. Angela Lewis, Director of Administrative Services. I would just like to remind you that summer jobs are now open and posted on our website, www.sncu.us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other administrative communication?
I'll make really quick. Mark Price, Information Technology. After my presentation, just to hit home how much this is happening, had a email from another city that, they had an email from a city that was from the city that was a DocuSign that was not from them, and it was a bad link. Just, it, it's a daily thing, just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you. Any Commissioner Mayes, anything?
Um, yeah, I think a lot of deadlines for summer activities at Parks and Rec are coming up, the sports leagues and whatnot. I believe Friday is a deadline for a lot of that stuff, so if you're, anybody signing up for any of that, check it out. Go Chiefs.
Commissioner Rippon?
Oh, just good, good night for the Chiefs last night.
Indeed. Indeed.
Can't complain.
All right. With that, I don't have anything else. We're adjourned.